Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our June 24, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business will please stand if you are able and join me for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, second item, agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
No to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Third item is our U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's land acquisition. Mr. Scott Goodwin. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, how are you?
You can come right up to the front here if you would like and
Sure.
join us. State your name and address for the record and
My name is Scott.
Sorry, this is Tom.
My name is Scott Goodwin. And the address is 5600 American Boulevard West, Suite 990, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55437.
Go ahead.
Perfect, so I'm here today. I know I sent you a packet. We are looking to acquire the two McMonigal tracks. They are just east of the polytrack that we just acquired a couple of years ago. The Minnesota Valley did a great job out there. There was a ton of stuff on the land, a couple of wells. They removed all the rubbish, capped everything, and we're ready to go ahead and transfer the property.
Okay.
So, I know I sent a form for you guys to sign off, just a certification for your county board.
Yep. Any questions from the board at this point? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the land acquisition from U.S. Fish and Wildlife? Is there any discussion?
I guess I would just add, and we talked about this at the last acquisition, but certainly supportive of this and, you know, is an important endeavor, but we need to realize it still does have an impact on our budget as we lose tax base. And, you know, we've talked in the past about the pilt or payment in lieu of taxes and, you know, hearing about those budget reductions and stuff like that in the governor's budget and things like that. So just, again, I'm, you know, supportive of this, but I think we all need to recognize that more land that comes off the tax rolls puts it on others in the county.
Correct. And if that pill gets cut, that's problematic for us.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right, at this time, we will move on to item number four. Welcome to our County Ditch 53 final hearing and redetermination of benefits. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning.
Bob, is there any changes to the agenda?
No changes today, Mr. Chair.
Move the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments from all parties interested in the County Ditch 53 redetermination of benefits process. The order of business for the hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, then we'll hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Osserson of the county staff to go through the jurisdictional documents at this time.
Yeah, by the way, this is one of four.
Correct.
Yes. It'll be four different hearings and four different ditches for any... So it'll be just as for County Ditch 53. Landowner information meeting was held on March 10, 2025. Hearing notices were mailed on May 27, 2025. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Minnesota, excuse me, Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street in Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including dates May 29, June 5, June 12. And I'll leave the memo here. This is again regarding to the hearing for County Ditch 53 redetermination of benefits. The County Ditch 53 watershed is approximately 900 benefited acres and is primarily located in Garden City and Vernon Center Township. On October 8, 2024, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed in order to create updated benefits and damages listing and viewer's report. A copy of the drafted viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 6, 2025. Action requested, we requested the Drainage Authority adopt the drafted findings in order, updating the County Ditch 53 viewer's report and the benefits and damages report. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
I'll move the jurisdictional documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the documents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I will now ask the appointed viewer staff to please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. It's all right, I'll stand to the side here so I don't have my back to the public. My name is Mark Behrens, Albert Lee Address. I'm a member of the Viewers Association. There's five viewers that work together in our group. We've got an office there in Freeborn County at my farm and a second house. There's four or five trainings a year viewers can go to to become accredited. There's three or four different groups throughout the state that do this viewing, so whether it's our group or one of the other groups throughout the state, the process on determining benefits would be similar if it's our group or one of the other groups. There's five items that are used to determine benefits, obviously how many acres within a watershed, your soil type, your location rate where your property is physically away from the county open ditch or county tile, the efficiency of the system, and whether or not you've got county tile on your property. Those five items come together to determine a benefit value for all the properties within a watershed. We divide your benefit value by the total benefits to get your percent of total benefits. So when there's repair maintenance done on that system, obviously the whole bill has to get paid, whether it's a $1,000 bill or a $100,000 bill. Each parcel pays their percentage of that bill on that system. Another thing that comes into play here with this redetermination of benefits, several of these ditches that we're talking about have open ditch on them. There's a law from 1977 that says when a redetermination of benefits is done, there has to be a one-rod grass strip acquired along the shoulder of the open ditch. That kicks in because of this redetermination. It's confusing because it's the same one-rod grass strip that Dayton talked about a couple years ago in his Clean Water Act, but with this redetermination, landowners do get paid for that one-rod grass strip. You don't have to do anything because it's already in a grass strip, filter strip, but you do get paid for that easement on that one rod. It's yours, you own it, you can sell it next week or next year, but you get paid for that one-rod easement. On these systems that we're talking about here today, we'll talk about County Ditch 53 first. It was established in 1917, has not been redetermined since it was established 105 years ago. Original benefits in 1917 were $22,000. There's 909 acres within the watershed of this system. It's got all county tile, there's no open ditch. There's 24,000 feet of county tile on the system. The tile range in size from eight inches to 24 inches. We determine the benefits for this system. We use county average corn yield, bean yields, average sale prices, CER ratings. We've got all that information. We build a book like this on every single system we work on. It's got all your soil types, your location rates, your acres. So if you want to see exactly how we broke out your parcels, we're happy to show you how we determine benefits on your parcel. If you want to see what we did on your neighbor's parcel, we're happy to show you that also. But on this system, on the benefits for this County Ditch 53, by ditch law, we have to look at it, how does your property benefit from the system over a 25-year period? We determine there's 1,541,000 worth of benefits on this system. By ditch law, we have to give an estimated assessment for this redetermination of benefits. So on any information you receive from the viewers, on the far right-hand column, you would have had an estimated assessment. We don't know how much money they've got in the account for this system. They might be $10,000 or $20,000 in the black or $10,000 or $20,000 in the red, but we have to give an estimated assessment for the redetermination. We just used $5,000 that covers some viewer costs, maybe some admin costs, but we have to throw a number at it. We used $5,000, and they will assess according to what they need in that account for that system. That's a Reader's Digest version of County Ditch 53. I handed out some maps there that have all this information on it and the maps, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Any questions from Mark from the board at this point? Okay. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. And again, just as Craig mentioned earlier, there is four hearings going on at the same time, so we'll go through the same process all four times. So at this time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 53 redetermining of benefits, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 53 redetermination of benefits? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 53 redetermination of benefits, please come to the podium. Hearing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and ask the board if you have any other questions or comments at this time. Hearing none, can I get a motion and a second to accept the draft findings and orders approved adopting the viewer's report and the benefit damages report?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? I think the only thing I would add, I don't have any questions or comments, but I'll give our little spiel that we give every time we have a ditch hearing. We appreciate everybody that comes to the informational meetings because that is where a lot of the work gets done, and it does make it a lot easier to move this stuff through the process at this little more formal hearing. So Kevin and I support those and the staff and the time, but also the time that the constituents take and the ditch owners take to come to those meetings. So thank you for that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 53 redetermination of benefits. All right, we will start on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits and final hearing. Are there any changes to the agenda today, Bob?
No, Mr. Chair.
No changes to the agenda or a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present viewer's report and receive comments from all parties interested in County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits. The order of business will be as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed viewer, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Osserson to go through the public, go through the jurisdictional documents at this time.
Yep, jurisdictional documents for Blue Earth County Ditch 74. Landowner information meeting was held on March 10, 2025. Hearing notices were mailed on May 27, 2025. Notice was posted of this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including May 29, June 5, and June 12, 2025. Blue Earth County Ditch 74 watershed is approximately 1,700 acres in size and located in Lyber Township. On October 8, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewer's report. A copy of the drafted viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 6, 2025. We request the Drainage Authority adopt the drafted findings in order, updating the County Ditch 74 viewer's report and the benefits and damages report.
Thank you, Craig. Do I have a motion to accept the documents in order?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I will ask the viewers to come up and give their review of the ditch. Mark?
All right, thank you. I won't go through the whole spiel again. I'll just get right to the chase on this County Ditch 74. This system was built in 1928, has not been redetermined since it was built 100-plus years, 100 years ago. There's 1,351 acres within the watershed of this system. Again, there's no county open ditch, it's all county tile on this system. There's 36,880 feet of county tile that range in size from eight inches to 26 inches. The benefits on this system, again, over a 25-year period, are 2280,000 worth of benefits. And again, we had to give an estimated assessment for this redetermination of benefits. We used $5,000 on the info that landowners received from the viewers. One last comment. I've had two people this morning on County Ditch 74 that were not able to make the informational meeting that we had, and it sounds like they're tiled out of the system. So however the commissioners or Drainage Authority want to deal with that, but anyway, I wanted to let you know I've had two people come forward.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
At this time, we were still going to work through the public comment portion. Anyone wishing to comment, as previously stated, you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits?
I'm Mark Gronwald from Suresco Township there, Midalia Address, and I wasn't able to make the first, that meeting in March, on March 10. But there are a couple small pieces that are in the watershed for Ditch 74 that, well, there's one piece that is definitely tiled to the north, so we don't use that. We don't use any of the county tile for it there. Plus, there's no outlet there because Ranky's ground to the south or to the south of it, they also went to the north. And then there's a piece of property we purchased this spring or early, early spring, late winter, and there's a piece on there that we're working with Stevens Tiling or Bob Stevens and Trevor Lemon. And there's a piece on there that's questionable as far as he, he said it'd make more sense to go to the north with it. And he's got maps on it. He's made, he's had maps made to show that it would work that way. So I guess we're wondering what the process is or if there is the ability to opt out on those two pieces.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, you want to touch that right now?
I guess it's, if I'm understanding, the pieces are still within the watershed, correct?
Right.
So they're still in the watershed, but you're thinking, you're thinking of taking them out?
Well, one definitely, and the other one, if it's allowable, we can go to the north limits.
Yeah. Usually when we're doing a redetermination, it's kind of, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong here, it's kind of a snapshot of what's out there now. There is a process to remove benefits if, at a later date, and that has to go through another hearing process. So you would have to basically petition out of the system with the details of what you're petitioning out, and then you, after you brought before the board here again, and that would be a petition for removal. I could talk to you about the specific statutes of that. But what we, but again, Mark can correct me, but usually it's what's there now is what we're, what this redetermination benefits is for today. Okay?
Yeah, it's, it's in the watershed, but
Would you mind going back to the microphone, please, so that they can pick it up? Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, like I said, it's in the watershed. I don't know if it's in... Terry was saying if it's in the original chain of the watershed, whether it is or not. How do you determine that? Is there...
Okay, that's a Mark question. Okay.
These watershed lines that are on the maps are drawn by engineers from ISG. They determine what surface water is going to flow to that system. And we always ask landowners at the meetings, if you're on that watershed border, make sure you look at it because nobody knows that property any better than the landowners if that water is flowing through, to the county system or away from the county system. And then, like I said earlier, we always ask people if they're tiled out of, at our landowner meetings, if they're tiled out of the system or into the system. So what you've got on your property where you're currently tiled out, we've got the same situation on a Zarn property, they weren't able to make the meeting. I was told they're tiled out. What we would do on acres that are tiled out, we do not remove the benefits on those acres, but we reduce them. If they're tiled to another county, and it depends if the other county system has been redetermined recently, so it gets blurry if the, we would add benefits to the adjoining county system. Basically, if you've got acres within County Ditch 74, you're tiled out of the system, we would reduce your benefits on 74 and add benefits to the adjoining system. So you aren't overpaying, you're just paying both ways, and then you're legal. Your surface water might go to 74, your subsurface would go somewhere else. But like I said, it's blurry with these adjoining systems. I don't know if they've been recently redetermined. Anyway, so it, bit of a wrench, but that's
All right. Thank you, Mark and Mark.
Yep.
We will continue our public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Morning.
Good morning. I'm Doug Bergman. I live in Chocpee, Minnesota, but I represent S.H. Bergman Farms. It's a little confusing out here because there's more than one Bergman in the farm or in this County Road Ditch 74, but I'm just doing the S.H. Bergman. Now, my, my comment, and it has to do with the, you know, the setup and redistribution, the, the price that they have set up, ours happens to be the highest one on there, which I don't understand at all because we're way at the end of the
The tile on that.
So how can we, how can we look that up and actually figure out if that's accurate or not? Because it seems wrong that we're the highest assessed one on the whole project.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Just right now? Mark?
Yeah.
Mark?
We'll let you address that.
Were you able to make our landowner meeting?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. At the landowner meeting, we talk about soil types, which is a big one. If you've got, we've got different soil types, I won't give the whole spiel now, but A-soil, low, without the ditch system would be standing water, cattails. If you've got a lot of your ground that's low, wet area, that gets the most benefit from the system, that has the highest multiplier. When we determine benefits, you said you're right at the end of the system. We've got different location rates. If you're on the county system, you've got, we've got different percentages that we use. So obviously acres are going to come into play, your soil type's going to come into play, your, where your location is on that system. So we've got all that information in our book, and again, I'm happy to show you, but that's how we determine the benefits on your parcel.
So you're saying if you have better soil type, you're going to be assessed at a higher level?
No, it, we've got A, B, C, D soil. C would be your best soil, but A-soil gets the most benefit from the system, so that has the highest multiplier. D soils, upland ground, 6% slope or more, that doesn't need the system near as much as the low ground, so that's got a small multiplier. So it's across the board on soil type. So that's a huge one on why that parcel might be higher. Could be acres, certainly, and soil type.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, I'll ask one last time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits? Anyone else wishing to comment? All right, hearing no public comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion. Craig, Mark, what's our best process for trying to deal with these two properties? Well, Mark, why don't you go back to the podium? What, what's your recommendation to deal with these properties?
One possibility is to approve all the numbers that we've put forth, except for these two that were brought up that are tiled out, just a thought, that are tiled out. We could address those two parcels and work with it at another meeting or continue the public hearing. It's certainly up to the board to everything, approve everything but those two, so you aren't hanging out there on anything else, or leave it all wide open.
Okay. Bob, thoughts from you?
I think if you would like to move forward today, you know, as Mr. Behrens indicated, you could approve all but those two that are tiled out and, you know, make your motion subject to revision as a result of this additional information.
Then we would have another public hearing on just those two pieces, or we would not even have a public hearing on those?
I'd maybe defer to the county attorney on whether another hearing is necessary.
We can do it, but if we need to, we'll schedule one.
Okay.
Past practice has been on that, to have a public hearing, but only on those two.
Only talk about those two items. And then we normally pick a time certain.
Time and date certain.
Time and date certain.
So we don't have to re...
Right. Renotice everything.
Okay. I like that process, that's what we will do.
But to be clear, we're just talking about the two landowners that talked about ground that's tiled out currently. If you choose to tile out...
That's a different process.
It's a different process, that's a petition process.
Yeah, in the future, if that's a, and I can talk to the landowner about the specific statutes and so forth.
Because once a public hearing is done, that, those are the numbers.
Yep. So Mrs. Zarn, we will, we've addressed your concern, she was having trouble hearing. We've addressed your concern, you and I will visit again, and we will work through your tiled-out acres, so.
Thank you, Mark, for that input and recommendation. All right, so at this time, I'll bring it back to the board if there's no further questions or comments, and I would entertain a motion to accept the County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits, except for the Zarn property, and what was the other one?
Crowne Lawn.
Crowne Lawn. To a time certain to finish them, and does somebody have a date and time for, to continue the hearing to? We should probably have that in the motion, correct? Should we just do it at the July 8th meeting? Yeah, how much time do you need? You'll probably want a month.
July 8th is works, and you're already going to be here for other hearings, so.
If wanted to be worse, we'll be here, yes.
Okay.
Will we be able to get that on the agenda for July 8th?
We can get it on the agenda if the work can be done.
Yeah, can you get it done by then, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, does everybody on the board understand that motion, what I'm asking for?
Okay, I will do, I will make that motion, that we accept, all except those two specific, and we address those in public hearing on July 8th during the nine o'clock board meeting.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on that motion? Any other discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. That will conclude our County Ditch 74 redetermination of benefits hearing on all of it, except for the two parcels. All right, we will move on to County Ditch 88 redetermination of benefits and final hearing. Is there any changes to today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes.
Being no changes, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
We'll do approve.
Got a second? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive public comment from all parties interested in the County Ditch 88 redetermination of benefits process. The order of business as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Osserson, the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, to review the jurisdictional documents.
The landowner meeting, information meeting was held on March 10th, 2025. Hearing notices were mailed on May 27th, 2025. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse, located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including May 29th, June 5th, and June 12th, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 88 watershed is approximately 5,700 acres in size and located in McPherson Township. On October 8th, 2024, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed and ordered to create an updated viewer, benefits and damages listing and viewer's report. A copy of the drafted viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 15th, 2025. We requested the Drainage Authority adopt the draft findings and order updating the County Ditch 88 viewer's report and benefits damages report. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
Move the documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the jurisdictional documents. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will now ask Mark Barnes to come forward and do his viewer's report.
All right, County Ditch 88, established in 1962. It's got county ditch, open ditch, and county tile. There's 5,500 acres within this system. Seven and a half acres of it is within the city limits of St. Clair. There's 3,900 feet of county tile. There's about 4.1 miles of county open ditch. As I talked earlier, that one-rod grass strip has to be acquired along the shoulder of the open ditch. For the last three or four years, with land, we used to have that value of the grass strip at average land sales, but now in the last few years with land sales all over the board from 10 to 15 to $18,000, we've been using just a straight $8,000 per acre for all of the counties that we're working in, about seven, eight, nine different counties, we've used $8,000 an acre, and we haven't got pushback either way that it's too low or too high. So we used $8,000 for the one-rod grass strip along the shoulder of the open ditch, and that would have been on acres that were cropland acres before Dayton's law. If it's through a building site, or through trees, or through non-benefited acres, the easement still has to be established, but we used $800 an acre instead of the 8,000. So on this system, acres that would have been cropland before Dayton's law, we've got 15.8 acres at $8,000. That's 126,000 of easement that has to be paid there. We've got a quarter of an acre that was through trees or a building site, paid at $800 there. So we've got $126,000 of easement that has to be acquired and paid for to the landowners along the shoulder of the open ditch. Again, we had to give an estimated assessment on our spreadsheets. We used $135,000 as that estimated assessment that covers the grass strip easement payments plus some viewer costs, maybe some admin. On this system, we've got $6,300,000 worth of benefits over a 25-year period. Also on this system, County Ditch 77 works its way into County Ditch 88. 88 has to be bigger and cleaned more often because of the additional water from 77. So we have a 5% outlet benefit for County Ditch 77 into 88. 77 pays all their own repair and maintenance, plus 5% of the repair and maintenance on 88. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mark, for that report. At this time, I will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please be respectful and civil. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 88? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 88 redetermination of benefits? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 88 redetermination of benefits, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board. Is there any further questions or comments from the board at this time?
We'll do approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the viewer's report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 88 redetermination of benefits. At this time, we'll move on to item number six. The final drainage hearing for today will be for County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits, final hearing. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion for the agenda?
I'm moving.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments from all parties interested in County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits. The order of business is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Osserson, the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, to review the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Landowner information meeting was held on March 10th, 2025. Hearing notices mailed on May 27th, 2025. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse, located at 204 South 5th, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including May 29th, June 5th, and June 12th, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 93 watershed is approximately 3,300 acres in size and located in Decore Township. On October 8th, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed and ordered to create an updated benefits and damages listing and the viewer's report. A copy of the drafted viewer's report and redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 16th, 2025. We requested the Drainage Authority adopt the draft findings and order updating the County Ditch 93 viewer's report and the benefits and damages report.
Thank you, Craig. Do I have a motion to accept the jurisdictional documents?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will now ask Mark Barnes to come up and give us the report on County Ditch 93.
All right, you'll be sick of hearing me talk, but we're almost done. So County Ditch 80, I'm sorry, 93, established in 1976, has not been redetermined since it was established. 1976 in ditch years, that isn't that old of a ditch system. There's 3,260 acres within the watershed of County Ditch 93. It's got county open ditch and county tile, 1,300 feet of county tile, 4.1 miles of county open ditch. Outlets into the Lusor River, a tributary of the Lusor. Again, we've got grass strip easement that has to be acquired on this system, paid at $8,000 an acre, which would have been cropland acres before Dayton's law. We've got 15.3 acres at 8,000. We've got 122,000 worth of grass strip there. On the non-benefited acres, trees through a building site, or non-benefited acres, we've got .61 acres at $800 there. Total easement damages, $123,000. Again, on this, we used $135,000 as an estimated assessment. Benefits on this system over a 25-year period, $6,400,000 worth of benefits. Happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? All right, at this time, I will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to come to the podium and make a statement, please state your name and address for the record, and be civil and respectful. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits?
My name is Douglas Bootman.
Morning, Doug.
Decore Township, Section 15. The very last loop in the ditch, that's never been part of the ditch, that's Winter Ship Creek. And I've got a nice little natural habitat, wildlife area down there. It's all grass, it's a flood plain, actually, you know, we get a lot of rain, floods in there. I don't know why it needs to be cleaned out, or why it should be cleaned out and destroyed that wildlife habitat. It's never affected the ditch in the past. I support the ditch, I mean, my farm brings into it as well, but I just would like to see that protected. I don't want to see come in here and grub out all the trees and establish a 16-foot buffer. There's already a buffer there, it's all grass. Yes, there's trees, I planted trees in there over the years, and it's a nice wildlife area. I'd just like to see it protected, instead of coming in here and clean out and all dropped out, all the trees all back, and can it just stay the way it is?
Sure. Thank you, Doug.
All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, we are just in the process of redetermination of the benefits of this project right now. We will be, when time comes to do the repairs, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, repairs or improvements, that will be done at a later date. So at this time, we are just redetermination of benefits. So Doug, if we, you know, if we move forward with the repair, we'll certainly keep you in the loop, keep you in the discussion on what we plan on doing with that portion of the ditch, so. Anyone else wishing to comment on County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits? Hearing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board. Any questions or comments from the board at this point? If not, can I get a motion to accept the final draft findings and orders approving adopting the viewer's report?
So moved.
Benefits.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 93 redetermination of benefits. Again, thank you, everyone, for your time. I will ask you, if you are going to go out in the hallway and have conversations, I support that and I appreciate that, but please stay a little further away from the door, because we're going to continue our meeting, we have a lot of business to do yet this morning. So we'll just give a minute or two for people to move around, and then we have some other business. Craig's up, or Ryan's up?
Ryan.
Craig Henry.
Hey, Mark, I think the meeting room right across the hall should be open.
If you want, Craig, where are you going?
Somebody opened it for you, so there's follow-up questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning again.
Looks like we still got a couple other items to get finished up here, and...
Good morning, you're free of me for the day.
Then you're done.
Yep.
All right, at this time, we got Ryan Henricher here to talk about a couple ditch projects, a couple more ditch projects.
Yep, I'll start with County Ditch 51. There was a petition for repair received under Minnesota Statute 103E.715. Purpose, petition for repair was received by Property Environmental Resources Drainage Staff on May 8th, 2025, under Minnesota Statute 103E.715. The petitioners are seeking the repair and replacement of subsurface tile affecting the main Branch 1, Branch 2, and Branch 3. Areas of rerouted tile are also proposed as part of the repair petition. The petition alleges that after some initial televised and infield inspections, that the petition repair work is necessary. Branch 2 was found to be running underneath a portion of current County Road 32, which is the cause for the proposed rerouting of Branch 2. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority KLR Van Brugen from Rankin Nunan has reviewed the proposed petition documentation and found them to be adequate for these proceedings. Attorney Van Brugen also recommends an engineer be appointed to provide their respective review report for the proposed petition for repair under Minnesota Statute 103E.715. Request, at today's Drainage Authority meeting, we're asking the Drainage Authority to approve the draft findings and order, ordering the appointment of an engineer and the commission of an engineer's repair report for the proposed petition for repair under Minnesota Statute 103E.715. Once the engineer's report is received by Drainage Management Staff, a final hearing date shall be set by order of the Drainage Authority. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. What are your wishes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Got a motion in a second on County Ditch 51. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, my second and last item for drainage today is County Ditch 56, bidding, excuse me, awarding of a bid. Requests for quotes were received from multiple contractors from the repairs involving portions of County Ditch 56, Branch 13, located in Sections 13 and 24 of Lincoln Township. The repairs include the replacement and installation of new HDPE tile. On Friday, June 6th of 2025, three quote submissions were received for the Branch 13 repair work. The highest lump sum quote coming from Newman Excavating LLC at $50,777.34, and the lowest quote submitted by Stevens Bobcat and Back Hole Service LLC at $39,051. The three submitted quotes are provided in the table below. Blue Earth County has worked with Stevens Bobcat and Back Hole Service LLC in multiple past projects with similar scope of work with positive results. Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff recommends awarding the repair work to Stevens Bobcat and Back Hole Service LLC. Today's requested action, we are requesting the County Ditch 56 Drainage Authority to award the bid to Stevens Bobcat and Back Hole Service LLC in the amount of $39,051 for the County Ditch 56 Branch 13 repairs.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you Ryan.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Thanks Ryan.
All right, with that, we will move into item number nine, planning and zoning. Looks like we got John and Scott here today, good morning.
Good morning.
You guys know how to clear a room?
Yeah, my best.
Like we got three items for us today, so.
Thank you Mr. Chair, PC 3724 is the first item, it's, the applicants are Shannon and Katie Cohane. The request is for a review and approval of an interim use permit for bluff stabilization reconstruction project. The property is zoned conservation and is in the shoreline of Madison Lake. The site includes Lot 3, Block 2 of Lakeview Hills subdivision, and the address is 22374 Lakeview Hills Road. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the Planning Commission. The applicant was present and spoke about the tree removals, seeding natural grasses, bushes, as well as planting pine trees. There was no public comment, and following discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. The board action is passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you Scott. At this time, this is a public hearing, I will open it up for public comment, will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected, expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you one-minute warning and let you know when you're, you've allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allowed to persons whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to matter under consideration by the board. I ask that, anyone wishing to comment on PC 3824 interim use here, permit? Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3824? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 3824? Hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? I would just add that this is a big project and looks like a lot of work for them, but appreciate them doing it. And if there's no pub, no other here, no other comments, oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move on to PC 1425.
All right, Mr. Chair, PC 1425 is a request for a review and approval from Samuel Borneke of the final plat of Borneke Second Edition, a subdivision plat consisting of three lots and two outlots. The property is zoned agriculture and is in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter and part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter, Section 24, in Loray Township. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicant was present and available for questions. There was no public comment and the Planning Commission had no concerns about the proposal. Following discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. And the board action for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you John. At this time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1425, the final plat, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1425? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1425, final plats, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item is PC 15-25. It's a request for review and approval by Dennis J. and Carol A. Dotson and Timothy and Jean. It's for approval of a registered land survey, number 179, consisting of three tracts. Each of the three tracts have been developed with single-family dwellings. No new development is proposed at this time. The property is zoned rural residence and includes registered land survey number 145, Government Lot 1, lying within the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20 in Jamestown Township, and Government Lot 2, lying within the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20, Jamestown Township. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the Planning Commission, and the applicant was present and had no additional comment. There was no public comment or concerns expressed by the Planning Commission, and following the discussion, the Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and the conditions recommended by staff. The board action for this item would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you John. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1525, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1525? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1525, the preliminary and final plat, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, looks like we got the next item, John.
We do. The next item includes an update based upon a communication from the Minnesota Department of Health. The Property Environmental Resources Department, serving as the primary point of contact as the delegated well program partner, received notification on June 17th of this year that the Minnesota Department of Health's core function fees will be increased as a result of the 2025 legislative action. This relates to Minnesota Statute 103I. The state core function fees were amended for new well construction to be $40, and they were previously $20, and well sealing was increased to $15 when it was previously $5. These fees are taking effect at the state level July 1 of this year. In reaction to this, the Property Environmental Resources is recommending a mid-year adjustment to the county's fee structure to cover those added fees that are passed along to the state as part of the delegated well program. And our proposed update for the board's consideration is looking at both the new well permit fee and the well sealing fee. And so the proposed adjustment would be to increase the fee for a new well permit fee from $300 to $330, a $30 increase. This increase will cover the Minnesota Department of Health's increase and account for any well sealing fees related to a well project. In looking at the well sealing fee, no change is proposed based upon currently there is no fee charged by Blue Earth County. The well sealing fees associated with the installation of a new well will be covered under the new well permit fee increase. Well sealing's not associated with the new well, commonly utilized the county's well sealing cost share program. And increase in the fees for well sealing projects would reduce the available cost share dollars due to administrative expenses. And so the requested action for this item for the board is to approve the fee changes as described within the memorandum within county board packets. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you John.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the fee increase, any discussion?
I think the only thing that's necessary to bring out here is that this is required by the state of Minnesota. This isn't Blue Earth County trying to raise fees for, for the people, this is what's being put down upon us by the state of Minnesota. And we're just trying to comply with the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, reacting to what's dealt to us.
Reacting to what's dealt with us.
All right, I got a motion in a second, if there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you gentlemen, have a good day.
Go.
All right, well let's move on to item number 11, Community Corrections, Drug Court Agreement. Good morning, John.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mr.
All right, accompanying my memo this morning is a cooperative agreement between Blue Earth County Community Corrections and the state of Minnesota through the 5th Judicial District. The agreement is for this upcoming fiscal year 2026, and the amount for the year is $90,000. The agreement allows Blue Earth County to provide, provide probation services to clients in the Blue Earth County Adult Treatment Court. The agreement would expire June 30th of 2026. Just a couple notes that I would make is that the $90,000 is consistent for what we have received for the last approximately 10 years, $90,000. So you could say the funding is a bit stagnant, but it is consistent. The other thing I would note about this agreement, it is, is for one year, and historically we have done two-year agreements with the state or the judicial district for services. And so I think that's maybe indicative of maybe the future potential fiscal issues that may be coming, that I would just make a note of that here in that historically, this has always been a two-year agreement, but at this time, we are doing a one-year agreement. I would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the cooperative agreement though between Blue Earth County Community Corrections and the state of Minnesota.
Thank you John, what are the wishes of the board?
Board to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion? So with that, you think the program will go away, is that kind of...
I don't believe so. I, I think though, there are going to be some challenging times ahead.
Okay.
And just in some initial conversations, you know, it's just one of those uncertain areas, I feel like for us. You know, as a whole, within the department, we've seen some changes with our subsidy that we're receiving from the state going forward, some reductions there. We've also seen and had conversations about the sentence to service program and the funding being cut from the state there. So when you're looking at the future, I think it's just one of the things that I wanted to bring to the forefront as part of this conversation is that when you look at the history, we've always had two-year agreements. Looking back the past 10 years, I believe they've all been two-year agreements, and looking at this one being one year, I just know that what we've seen so far, you know, just recently may be indicative of what may be coming down the line. So we could be looking at reductions, we could be looking at changes in the contract. I just know that when we've always done two years and all of a sudden we're looking at a one-year, it does raise my eyebrows a little bit.
Sure. And at this point, this is getting a little bit into the weeds, but that probably doesn't even cover our time, does it, the grant?
Absolutely does not.
Okay, absolutely.
No, absolutely, it is not kept up with the increase in wages and benefits. So yes, we've made some changes within our own department with the structure, what we're doing in drug court, but no, this, you know, stagnant at $90,000 does not keep up with where we're at with wages and things like that.
Which causes problematic for us, so.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? If not, I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you John, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we got Human Services next, Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Phil.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for hearing me today. I have a number of action items and also informational items for the board as well. Starting with the action items, in Adult and Disability Services, we've historically brought these semi-independent living services contracts together as a group. They all mirror one another as far as the term and the rates. You'll see the listing of the providers, Ali, Dignity for Life, Employee Ownership Network, Perry Myring Center, Perry Community Services, Savita, Smiles, and Unique Abilities. These contracts would allow us to meet our service needs for individuals with a disability residents of Blue Earth County. All the contracts, as I said, have the same terms, two-year contracts, July 1st of 25 through June 30th, 27. The rates for the contracts will increase by 2% each of those years, and you'll see the amounts. Those amounts are significantly lower than the rates the providers receive for waivered services, so state-funded services. So there is a comparison that puts us below the average. And then you'll see a split out as well for SILLS, 85% paid by state, 15% by county. The next action item is our long-term agreement with Hearth Connections. This helps with our housing program for rental assistance, homeless management information system, which is our operating system, and support services that flow from HUD through the continuum of care to permanent supportive housing grant. And then we, that operates in conjunction with our Blue Earth County supportive housing program. The term is June 1st of 25 through May 31st, 26. You'll see in the report, a breakdown of the funds compared this cycle to last, at which represents an increase of 9.4% at $181,612. Our fraud contract, we did ask for an increase here to be able to cover FTE within our, within our programming, and we were successful in that. The fraud prevention investigations are provided then through our staff, and then the term, July 1st of 25 through June 30th, 27, and $125,000 per year. That was an increase of $10,000 per year from the previous grant cycle. And finally, Mr. Chair, administrative item, task force appointment. Devin Mortwitt from, for the Mental Health Task Force and Local Advisory Committee. Ms. Mortwitt is employed currently with Mankato Department of Public Safety, so it's a good partnership with her, and as a community resource coordinator, and she is located in Commissioner District 4, and those are my action items for today.
Thank you Phil. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any discussions or questions for any of the items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three informational discussion items, all under the Public Health umbrella. The first of those being child and teen checkup, there is a slide in your packet. You'll see a dropdown in the volume of service under introduction and reminder letters sent, and I'll explain that in a moment, and then an increase in outreach letters sent. I did include some notes in the packet, just if the board members were interested in a little more deeper explanation. Child and teen checkup serves those ages 0 to 21. Our purpose is to reduce the barriers... Our purpose is to reduce the barriers to access medical services for those on medical assistance. Those introduction letters in the first graph are sent to medical assistance enrollees, and reminder letters are sent to all children who are due for their child, their well-child check, and that's based on their date of birth. You'll see some history here. I won't obviously go through all this, but the number of eligible participants has changed, and so that's the volatility. One of those influences in '23 was Mankato Clinic participation. They assumed their outreach responsibility, so that affected our numbers. And then, the impact of unwinding as we were frozen if somebody was eligible through COVID, and then after that, the action to unwind those and look back at eligibility again had some of that impact on what you saw on the graphs. So, both of those influenced some of that volatility. Also, in '24, the mailing letters, we transferred that internally to our financial assistance unit, and then public health staff were able to expand the family and community outreach. So, that, the up in the second graph is because they could spend more time doing that. And we also had a partnership with Open Door that is mentioned there. Looking at this year, expansion of healthcare started in January. We're still trying to understand the trending. There is ongoing concern about capacity and potential increase in individuals seeking coverage under PMAP for child and teen checkup for the service, and you'll see just how those are figured based on eligibility, and there's a rate, and so that's kind of how we look at budget. But, as we've talked about often, there's a lot of volatility in public health. You know, it's smaller bits and pieces that we kind of weave together, and so there's a constant churn that goes on. But I think all three of these programs within public health are really important. The next one, board's aware of, SHIP, Statewide Health Improvement Partnership. You'll see in the boxes on the graphic, the strategies and the settings. You'll see that our grant cycle ends in October and then starts up again in November, obviously, and you'll see the partner awards in '24 at the very bottom of the narrative, $9,600 to partners. In the notes, there's a definition of each of those major strategies of the four. We support community partnerships in policy, systems, and environmental change. Some examples for the board's awareness of awards in '24 were to Region 9, Lake Crystal School District, and Leola Catholic School, and then you'll see a couple pending projects with Mankato Clinic and also My Place. And so, those are kind of our at-the-ground-level supports. They're not big-ticket items, but I do think they help with building bridges and also with mission. Finally, just looking at first steps, this is our prenatal and postpartum women and family service effort. For healthy birth outcomes is our mission. We support providing these services early in the pregnancy, and you'll see that in the graph, that we front-load these in the first trimester and try to look for any concerns or risks that can be mitigated. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see that video link, and I think the board has seen that, but it's a really, really good resource, and so for other people, or if you're ever asked for examples of some of the work we do in public health, I think that video is really good. Physically, we're located in Mankato Clinic, but we can also provide services to Mayo Clients. In the middle of the notes, under examples, I won't read all these, but it gives, if you say, "What do we actually do?", there's a list of practical interventions. There was a note from our coordinator that 12 patients, former patients or participants, are now working in professional roles, and you see that in the video as well, of people that said, "I was recipient as well as now I'm a provider", and so we love those stories. So, that's what I have for you today.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Phil at this point?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work and your staff, and a lot of things going on in Human Services right now.
Always, yes, yes.
Right now, too.
That's for sure.
We are lucky that the state didn't shift all those costs to us, though, so...
Right. We, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, too, we had some news that one of our pending really expensive individuals that was in the state hospital, and to the tune of $70,000 a month, we think we're going to be able to move that person. So, I just appreciate Julie Moniz, the supervisor in that program, and really advocating for that, huge, huge dollars. I mean, if you look at a whole year at 70 grand a month for one person, that's what we were talking about, and we're not out of the woods yet, but it's really, you know, because things are bad enough, we're in a hole, and then if you have those things hit you as well, it's just the double whammy effect is really hard to stomach sometimes, so...
Yeah, working through it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good day. All right, looks like we got all of our business down, move down to administration.
Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for June 10.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
Move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 14 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just to have informational items for the board today, starting with the promotion of an eligibility specialist to the fraud investigator position. Then, we did have a resignation of a licensed center specialist. We also had a transfer of a social worker in our child protection area to our supportive housing area, leading to the recruitment of a social worker in our child protection area. We also have another opening in our child protection area, so we're begun recruitment for both of those positions. Then, we had a promotion of our library technician, a part-time position, to a part-time librarian. We also had a promotion of our human service supervisor over accounting and childcare assistance to the assistant finance director. So, we're moving people around, part of a more strategic planning. And then, lastly, we had a resignation of an account clerk in our human resources area. Happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items?
Any questions? Thank you, Bob.
All right, then, item number 15 in your packet is an application to conduct excluded bingo activities at the Blue Earth County Fair, so a request from the Blue Earth County Fair Association for bingo during the fair on July 24 through July 27.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the gambling permit. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings me to the end of my list. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Let's move on to Commissioner Reports. Vance, I'm going to start with you today.
You start with me. Well, since I, our last meeting on the 10th, I had a NACO RAC meeting on the 11th. I attended a retirement for a HR person from TDS on the 12th. We had our Minnesota County's District 7 meeting on the 13th. On the 16th, I did a state hospital museum tour through Vine. It was really interesting. Had nothing to do with county work, but it certainly was interesting. We had our work session on the 17th, and I, on the 18th, I had a, I attended the Association of Township Officers Meeting, and that was the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay, let's see, June 10th, had a joint ditch meeting with Rosica, and then just on June 11th, had MICA of the cities, and then June 17th, we did have a county board work session. Concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Kevin?
June 10th, I also was at the joint 83 hearing after board meeting, as well as our PR update, participated on the 11th at the RAC. On the 12th, I participated in the Minnesota River Congress. 13, as mentioned, was AMC District 7 meeting, work session on the 17th, and then that afternoon, we had a CD 60 landowner meeting. On the 18th, Drainage Work Group met, as well as Blue Earth County Townships that evening. 20th, I participated in the AMC board meeting, and 23rd, on the NACO Ag Policy Meeting, and this morning, part of the board meeting, we had the JD 48 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the 11th, I too participated in RAC. On the 12th, I had my TDS meeting, and I attended the Inside Washington NACO webinar. On the 13th, the district meeting. The 16th, another NACO webinar. On the 17th, the work session, and a NACO, no, I missed that. And Region 9 was on the 18th, so we had our bus tour in the morning and then the annual meeting that evening, and I got to say, I was kind of impressed.
Good.
Yeah, it was good. And then, that's the end of my report.
Budget meetings.
Oh, budget meetings. I had budget meetings on the 23rd with the sheriff and the county attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner. I had a lot of the same meetings, JD meeting before the last board meeting, Mark and I were up at MICA, District 7 meeting, which I thought went very well, good turnout, got to learn a lot, not learn a lot of new things about what's going on in the state, but Julie does such a nice job keeping us all informed of what's going on up there. Then, I had my cell central workforce meeting, it would be quarterly, not a whole lot new going on there, same old business. They lost some funding on quite a few of their programs, so they're trying to put a plan together to deal with that. Work session was mentioned. JD 22 landowner meeting went very well. Again, the landowner meetings, informational meetings, are much easier to deal with than what we've seen here earlier today, but still going to have some of that, don't matter how hard we try. Township officers meeting, I gave our report there. I think the only thing that we did, I did bring up the shotgun rule, and the feedback I got from everybody that I talked to was to leave the shotgun rule the way it is and not allow rifles. This is the feedback, I'm just gathering feedback, but that was pretty much, even a few of the township officers reached out to me after the meeting, a day or two later, and weighed in on it. So, just gathering information, we'll let the sheriff and attorney muddle through all of that, but... And then, budget meetings yesterday with the sheriff and attorney, which both went very well, and then a joint ditch meeting this morning with, for JD 48. That brings me to the end of my report. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to recess to the Thunder Bar at 11:30.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are recessed.